Meeting called to order. Please join me in the prayers. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for directions which will lead for our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings in all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor Rock?
Here.
Counselor Scott?
Here.
Counselor Yem?
Here.
Mayor Chow?
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Here.
Counselor Gitchia?
Here.
Counselor Janess?
Here.
Counselor Leahy?
Here.
Counselor Mercier? Counselor Noon? Counselor Robinson?
Here.
Ten present. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Good morning, everyone. Good morning all to all the counselors and everyone in the chamber. And good morning to everyone watching us from home on this beautiful Saturday morning. This is a continuation of the meeting where we left off on Tuesday, so we can finish the agenda and start with new business this upcoming Tuesday. And again, I thank you all for everyone's patience and joining us this morning. Mr. Clerk, we left off from Tuesday's meeting on the motion of responses. I think we left off with the alphabet S. Is that correct?
Yeah, we'll start with the with the letter S today, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So we'll start with the motion response, alphabet S. This is on the Love Lock Bridge. Any comment or question, Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to Peter for putting this together. As we learned that everything else is always have the negative sides of it, but I tend to look at it more positive because people will come to Lowell, they say, oh, Lowell has a Love Lock Bridge, so let's visit instead of fly all the way to Paris. We can stop in Lowell. And this is good to have. It's a way to attract tourism to the city of Lowell. We travel a lot, so every places we go, we always try to find what the landmark or the interesting place to visit. So with the recommendation, I would like to make a motion to send this to for further discussion to the Arts and Culture Subcommittee.
Motion by Counselor Yem, second by Counselor Robinson. Motion is passed. Any other comments or questions on this motion response? Hearing none, we now move to the next motion response, which is the alphabet T on Perez to Monument Committee. Counselor, any comment or question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Chow. First, I just want to thank the Monument Committee for taking up this discussion and bringing this forward. I think it's a fitting tribute for Mr. Perez, and I look forward to seeing the installation done on Market Street. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. Could you just find out what the plaque is going to entail? It'd be nice if we could put his face on it. So sometimes we have a plaque with just words, sometimes we have a plaque with the picture or face or whatever. So it'd be nice if we could have his face on the plaque.
Excellent request. Maybe, Mr. Manager, if you could maybe give the counselors a preview of what that might look like for comments and suggestions. Thank you. Any other comments or questions by any member? Hearing none, we now go to the next motion response, the alphabet U. This is on city hall traffic coming. Any comment or question, Counselor Leahy?
No, thank you. It just, you know, again, I just want to make sure that this project gets done this year if possible. And I understand that when I threw conversation with the traffic engineer to speak, raise crosswalks or humps may not be ideal for the fire department trucks, but anything we can do to come in front of city hall would be great. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. The next motion response is the alphabet U, which is on Lowell High School Project restroom parity. We already had taken this up already on Tuesday's meeting. We now will go to-
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Robinson?
I'd like to make a motion, if possible, to revisit 6.1. When that appeared, none of us had been provided that information. Since we've all been provided that information, is that something we can take a look at today and either vote up or down?
Second.
Okay. Good comment, Counselor Robinson. Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also appreciate the fact that we did get a chance to view that beautiful sculpture. And I mean, I didn't mean any offense. I really was taken to the woodshed on that because I didn't want to vote on something I didn't know. And people were got me, and they were very irate. I'd never seen anything like it. I didn't mean any disrespect in any way because of it. I just have a philosophy that I don't take things on without seeing it. I have to see it, and I didn't. But now that I have seen it, I think it's beautiful. I would support it. If it went on roll call, I'd be honored to support it. But I hope people understand where I'm coming from. You have to read the fine lines, and I didn't see anything, so thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. Counselor Mercier, that is on the administration. I apologize for that. We had been talking about it so often. A couple of the other councils had seen it. This has been going back and forth with the administration. The fault of that picture not being attached to this is my fault and my fault alone. So that wasn't for you to take that. That was for me. And immediately when you said that, I looked through the motion responses and did not see that photo there, and you were completely correct. I did speak to a couple of folks about that. I appreciate the fact that the counselors did not see that photo, and I apologize. That is completely on me on that. So I do apologize for that, and we rectified that problem. That will not happen in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to the city solicitor. This is on Tuesday night's agenda, so can we, under procedure, take this up today? Because it's on for next Tuesday. So it's been passed out as a-
If I could make comment before Mr. Clerk mentioned, this was on the vote from last meeting, is your correct issue, and that was tabled to Tuesday. So I would ask the clerk the same question. It was tabled from the last meeting. We did not take a vote on it either way, given that there's maybe some interest by the council members to resolve this matter today. Would you like, Mr. Clerk, to answer first, or Counselor Mercier?
I was asking the city solicitor, not the clerk.
Okay.
Well, I just wanted to say, I did speak with the city clerk, Michael Gary, before this, and I know that it's on next Tuesday. I asked him specifically if we could suspend the rules and do that and take the vote. I asked if there were any speakers registered for Tuesday. He said no. Had there been speakers registered for Tuesday, and they're not here today, I would have never have supported it. But there are no speakers registered.
If I may, Mr. Clerk.
Sure. If I could take, to Counselor Gitchia's request, maybe to have the solicitors answer first. Let me go to you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Solicitor?
Yes, thank you. Again, I think because it was tabled and it did come up at the last meeting, it can be revisited today.
Yeah.
Mr. Clerk?
And Counselor, I'll just say, the matter was continued to the next meeting. There is a vote that is on the current agenda for Tuesday, which had to be posted Friday. It is on that agenda for this coming Tuesday. It's a different, it's a little bit different vote because there is a picture that is attached now. I think the best procedural process is to have that vote Tuesday. Counselor, I understand that there are no registered speakers for that Tuesday, but they can register right up to the time of the meeting or up to four o'clock the day of that meeting. So there may be some. So I think best procedurally is to take that vote as it is, as it was directed to by the prior meeting and as it is on a current city agenda posted Friday in compliance with the open meeting law, take it up Tuesday. It is on that agenda. And again, if people want to register to vote for it, they have up to four o'clock the afternoon of that day.
Counselor Gitchia?
I just want to clarify. I'm 100% for this. I just wanted, I was looking at procedure-wise. I had no problem with Counselor Robinson supporting that motion at all. It's just, I was just looking at procedure-wise because some people may want to speak, that's all. Thank you.
It is up to the counselor to make a decision today. We could either make a decision this morning, or we could wait until Tuesday, which is only a few days from now. I believe with the, what I've heard right now, I think counselors would be in favor of it. So I think waiting a few days probably would not affect the timeframe when we're going to put the sculpture out anyway. So if the council would agree to it, we can delay till Tuesday. Counselor Robinson?
I'll withdraw the motion. If procedurally, that's the best practice, it's not a big deal to me. I just figured it was something that we were able to see. In the meantime, we're back meeting again. Why not get it done? But if it's best practice to wait till Tuesday, that's what we'll do. Thanks.
I just believe it's cleaner procedurally, Counselor.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I will. People involved have reached out to my office, and I do believe there are people who intend to register to speak on Tuesday. So hopefully, they will reach out to the clerk, but they have certainly contacted my office and are excited to talk on Tuesday.
Counselor Mercier?
You should screen them to make sure that they're not going to retaliate towards me like they did the other day. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? And Counselor Mercier, your comment was right on point from last Tuesday. It is something that we want to take a vote when we have full information, and I know that many members here are all in support of it. But we just want to get the information, do our due diligence to make sure that we are in full support of it. Thank you all. No other comments or question? We shall now move past this personal point privilege. We now go to the next section, which is 5.2, informational report. The first report from the city manager's office is on the ARPA cultural fund.
Thank you, Counselors.
Through Mr. Manager to Peter Crewe.
Thank you, Counselors. Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. We have put forward a motion. We are eager to get funding out to the cultural sector. There are three principal areas that we'll be putting out to the public, taking the form of festivals and events, public art, and support directly to cultural organizations. And I'm happy to take any questions from any of you at this time.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, and thank you very much, Mr. Crewe, for putting that together. As everybody knows, this is exciting news for all of us. Our creative economy did take a serious hit over the pandemic, and this sector really does need our help. This is going to help all of our artists in the area, as well as some opportunity for some organizations to get together right here on our own plaza, as well as throughout the downtown. So with our restaurants, our nonprofits, I think Mr. Crewe and the organization of CASE has done a great job, and this is an opportunity for us to really start to reinvigorate the downtown, as well as all the nodes out into the neighborhood. So I want to say thank you to CASE and everyone. I know the council has been calling down to my office, as well as to CASE, to offer their thoughts and their knowledge as to what would make a difference to really, once again, to utilize that word, reinvigorate our creative economy. So thank you very much, Mr. Crewe.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. I'm glad to see that we're making commitments in this area. Does this encompass potentially, like has been discussed many times, the closure of some areas in downtown for different cultural events to keep pedestrians out and about? Will some of that be tied into this?
Mr. Manager?
Yes, it will be. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. Counselor, yes, it will be. They're going to be working hand in glove with DPD as well. I know that Ms. DeRoges is in my office as well, as we're talking about this. Once again, trying to continue to reignite that flame in the downtown. As most of you know, we've started with Munch Madness. We've had music outside in the past fall. We anticipate increasing that. We happen to believe that, you know, live music and shutting down portions of streets to assist some of our community members, as well as some of the restaurants, to, you know, jazz up our downtown. And that goes for even some of the nodes out in our neighborhoods. So I know that Mr. Crewe and the entire team down there are willing and eager to listen to people's ideas. I know that they have been. This has been something that we've been waiting for, so this is the first step of a pretty long game, and we'll be looking to see what we can do to, you know, increase the art participation, as well as our entire community.
Thank you. And just, you touched on Munch Madness, and we just had breakfast, and thank you to the participating restaurants. They're promoting it very well. At the end of the meal, they brought over the flyer, they explained what the program was about, and gave us the receipt and told us that was how to utilize and enter in to win or take a shot at Munch Madness. So thank you to all the restaurants that are participating in it, too.
I appreciate that, Counselor, very much, but actually, we didn't exclude the counselors from winning, so. And I know all the counselors are down helping the restaurants all the time. So I think it's only the, it's only my office that can't win. So sorry about that, folks.
Counselor Gitchia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to Peter. Is there an amount budgeted for advertising in this so that we can promote, promote, promote these events in what we're doing? Because even right now, I would hope that we come back to the council with presentations on prior, so we can get to these events prior and we can get it out into the public that way. So that would be my only question to all of these, is they all look fundable, but the question comes down to, you know, how do we promote them the best we can throughout the city?
Sure, thank you, Counselor. And first, it's super fantastic now to have Melissa and Deandra in the office. They've really upped our communication game already. There is a separate pool of ARPA funds as well that is dedicated specifically for marketing, and I believe we'll be looking to work closely with Melissa and Deandra and the manager on utilizing that to make sure we're getting the word out as much as possible about events, without taking resources away from directly funding the events.
My concern right now is that anything that's done in the spring, we're almost behind for the advertising end. And anything that's going to be done towards the summer, we better get out of the gate now because families are making plans for vacations and what to do over the summertime with their children and stuff. And I think as we look at all of this, advertising becomes the big piece to how successful these things become.
Absolutely. 100% agree. And actually, we worked with, we actually sat down with our partners at Mosaic Lowell just last week and built out, I think for the first time, a comprehensive list of all the events and festivals that happen sort of throughout the year. So we'll be working with them over the next coming weeks and publishing out and making sure that that's available, sort of for the first time, in a real comprehensive look at everything that happens throughout the year.
Where can residents go to see these things in the schedules?
Sure. So the best place, of course, is to go to LikeLowell.com and check out the events calendar. Also, MosaicLowell.org has a really great list of events as well. And we publish things on social media on a weekly basis, and I would also recommend everyone sign up for our newsletter, which you can also do right at the bottom of LikeLowell. And that goes out once a week with an updated list of events that are happening.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager? Are you, Peter, any other comments or questions by any council member? I would thank the manager's office and Peter Crewe and CASE for working on this funding. It's great to see that you're focusing on a smaller organization, the smaller events, and I think the report was very comprehensive. It covers different categories of events and cultural diversity. It's a great job, and I look forward to it. And from what I understand, Peter, this is more like a rolling deadline. Is that correct? So people can apply when an event comes out, as long as the money is available to provide to these events?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. And we are looking, of course, to Counselor Gitchia's point. We're looking to prioritize right now festivals and events and public art because they're the ones that are most dependent upon weather as we enter sort of into the warm weather season. And then we'll be phasing in cultural organizations in a couple of months. But we hope to make applications for those programs available within a week or two.
Thank you again for the report. This year promised to be another exciting year for the city of Lowell. No other comments or questions? We now go to the next item on the agenda, also information report. This is on Cambodia Town Neighborhood Plan, and this was a very large and a very comprehensive, and it takes a long-term study to put this report together. I see a couple hands. We're now going with Counselor Noon and Counselor Yem. Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to the administration for putting this book together. This is a book, and it's a lot to digest. It's wonderful, a lot of work put into it. I know, so maybe it does need to get out to the community so that they're more excited, they're going to be more excited than I am, you know, to see this. And this is a long, long, long time coming, and this is a long work. It's a lot of work to do, to go forward on this. So I would say that maybe we send it to a committee of some sort so that to have it digested a little further, and maybe also inviting the organization like CMA, like Clemente Park Committees, and have them invite their members to come and give input and be excited like I am. So thank you.
Motion by Counselor Noon to refer to appropriate subcommittee, second by Counselor Yem. Counselor Yem, any comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to echo what Counselor Noon said, and thank Giovanni and her administration, her team putting this together. It's a long, long, long page, but it's well done, well-written. I just have one suggestions to, from, through you to the manager and the staff at the DPD that if it possible, we make a poster board and then display that at the Clemente Park with the QR code where people who want to learn more, especially on existing condition, the Phase 1, Phase 2, and the future plan. So have it colored like this, display it with kind of protection so that it would not be damaged by the weather, and there's a QR code on the bottom that whoever, and people use the park a lot, can just scan the QR code, and they learn all about what we are looking at here today. So that's my only suggestion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Yem, and Counselor Noon, I see your hand.
Yeah, I just want to add-
Maybe on your, on your motion, if there's clarification, you want maybe a joint zoning committee of neighborhood and arts and culture?
It's, leave it up to you, Mr. Mayor. But I just want to add this, Mr. Mayor. Given that the New Year's, Cambodian New Year's is coming up, the 22nd, maybe the city's, DPD can have a booth there, you know, at Clemente Park. The event is starting, actually, starting from senior center in the morning and going to the park right around noon time. So you get a booth. I can, I mean, you can have someone there. I will have the booth being taken care of by the committee. That way, the information's out there, Mr. Mayor, so that going to be hundred and hundred people are going to see this plan. They're going to be excited with me, like me. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. For clarification on the motion, would it be referred to the joint neighborhood and arts and culture subcommittees, second by Counselor Yem? If you could make amendment to that, Mr. Clerk?
I could.
On favors, I pose a note that motion is passed. Any other comments or questions on this one? Giovanni, that's a long, comprehensive report. Would you like to say something before we go on? Because that's a lot of work that you put into it.
Thanks. The team at DPD worked, obviously, a lot to get this completed with our partners at CMA and the Lowell Community Health Center. It really stemmed from a grant that the health center got and approached us about. And so it was a combination of looking at health impacts and how our physical environment impacts our communities. So we jumped right in at the opportunity to work with them. So I welcome an opportunity to have the folks that worked on this plan with the health center and CMA and all the partners to present more in-depth at a subcommittee. That would be great. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, I want to say thank you very much to Giovanni and her, Giovanni and her team over at DPD because they've done a fabulous job as well with all of the partners. But as many of you know, we had the very soft opening of Open Lowell, where we're fostering culture of respect and open-mindedness, building strong community bonds. And one of the thoughts that we had a discussion on, myself, Giovanni, and our team members, were really talking about how Open Lowell could host a celebration about the Cambodia Town Neighborhood Plan, with that would probably take place in May. And that might be an opportunity for us, per the will of the council, to host it someplace where we could have an event similar to what we did over at Pinella, where people would be welcomed, where we could talk about it, where we could invite, obviously, all of the residents of the city of Lowell, as well as all of the employees, just to, once again, to the second rendering of Open Lowell. Once again, as many of you know, because I see so many familiar faces, that we're at the first soft opening, as we call it, we're really trying to bring that in, and we thank Pinella and Viviana and her family for really hosting a heck of a show. And I want to say thank you for Assistant City Manager Machado for showing us the moves. He did a great job. It was really, really, wasn't that good, but the hospitality was very much appreciated over at Pinella. But that's a discussion that I would like to have with the counselors in the next few days to see if that's something that maybe in the month of May, that, you know, Open Lowell, you know, once again, opens our doors and tries to get that accomplished for Cambodia Town Neighborhood Planning and show a celebration and show that this initiative is celebrating that inclusive environment that we're all, we're all looking for. So once again, last and last but not least, to Assistant City Manager Giovanni, thank you very much for your team's hard work on this. This is one heck of an accomplishment.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Manager, if you could ask the owners of Pinella if the council are still welcoming back after they saw us do the tango? We'll now go to the next informational report, which is fiscal year 24, on the budget update through Mr. Manager to Mr. Baldwin. Would Mr. Manager like to go first, or Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Included in the council's packet for this evening, this morning's meeting, is a update on the ongoing preparations for the fiscal year 2024 budget. We wanted to give the council an update as to our status and the current lay of the land. So in early, mid-January, January 25th, 2023, we began the process in earnest. The department heads were all given direction to submit to the city manager's office their budget requests for fiscal year 2024, which were due on February the 15th. So since that time, the finance team has been working with those requests to develop our forecasts for the coming years and to develop the projection for FY 2024. So included in the packet is a recap of the calendar. It is our expectation to deliver a balanced budget to the city council on May 23rd, 2023. In overview, our challenges are not like, this year are not unlike previous years. Increases in fixed costs for pensions and health insurance, funding previously negotiated cost of living adjustments for our collective bargaining units, as well as debt service costs and other inflationary pressures on the budget. So if, to put the current status of the- So if, to put the current status of the budget in perspective, if all departments were to be granted their wish list requests, which is essentially when they come in, every department puts forward their request for if they were to have everything they believe they need, we would be at about a $20 million deficit. So that is the starting point that we have to work back from. That is not, it's a big number, but it's not unlike previous years. To put that in perspective, at a 2.5% increase in the levy, we would still need another 12% increase in revenue if we were to go by the tax levy. That is not our expectation, and so that is our task for the next several months before a budget is delivered to the council. So because the city's budget is comprised so heavily of state aid, we are dependent upon the budget process at the state level. Because there is a new governor this year, there is additional time afforded to the legislature under the law for which the new governor can present her budget. But we have seen that now. H1 includes a substantial increase in Chapter 70. There's a $27.7 million increase in the Chapter 70 aid. That's education aid that goes directly to the schools. But there is a component of that on the city side that requires an additional amount in the local contribution. The other major account that we keep our eyes on at the city level is the unrestricted general government aid, OGA. That increased year-over-year at $583,000. So to compare those together, you can see that the money that we get from the state to fund everything else is not nearly as participatory as the education funding from the state. You know, the MMA and other advocacy organizations are pushing the legislature to increase that number for unrestricted aid. We will join that call because the state has seen a significant increase in, in revenue from tax receipts, and so it is, you know, as a community of municipalities, we feel that we should share in that surplus. And that is, that is our task. So, yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions, but that is an update for the council. Thank you very much.
Any comments, questions? Counselor Kishir?
It's hard to look at this memo and read it and actually understand. We understand a number that people are asking for, but we don't know as a board here what they're asking for when we come to the $20.1 million. Is it the three extra fire trucks that we've talked about that we could take out of the ARPA funding? Is it, you know, is DPW asking for more vehicles to make it more efficient during the winter? Are we looking at engineering where they're deficient in the roads and trying to fix that? So without seeing that, and you see a 14.75% increase if this was the way that it's outlined here, and then you're looking at $24.2 million in a fund where we don't have that kind of money. It's interesting to read it, but there's really nothing tangible that we can grab onto. We see a number, okay, here's a number, here's the shock factor, we're going to come in lower than this. We all know that we sent out the shock factor to the residents. You've been here a long time, the CFO, to corner. When you look at this and you look at the wants and needs, what percentage is realistic that we're going to be asking the residents for? Like you outlined before, you've seen this in the past, you've cut all the way down. What is the number that the administration is going to come back and ask the council to vote on? Because we must have some kind of way of making those adjustments around number because right now we're watching other communities set budgets and everything, and they have real solid numbers going forward. Do you have any idea on what we're thinking to go from a 14.7 down to, how do we go down if we're looking at?
Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I can address, I think in part, a few of your questions, Counselor. This is the standard process, and it is not until May that the council traditionally sees the full budget as, you know, in a plan-y form of government. We work directly with the departments, and there is a lot of work to go still with the departments to right-size their budgets, as I'll call it. Those items such as fire trucks or other large purchases are funded through the capital budget, and so that process is ongoing at the same time concurrently with the operating budget, but is funded outside anything over $25,000 for equipment or other large initiatives, perhaps through the Department of Planning and Development or through the Department of Public Works. Those will be presented to the council from the capital plan, and we analyze the impact because the two are sort of tied at the hip to the debt service, but it is, they are two separate proposals. One funded through a loan order that will come before the council at the same time, one through the appropriation order for each of the departments. So to answer your question more directly, the, it is not unlike, the things that I've seen this year from the departments are not unlike prior years. We are going to attempt to fund the priority areas, public safety, education, economic development, quality of life, the homelessness issues. Some of those initiatives will require additional positions, additional funding for contractual obligations of each of the departments, and we will attempt to come forward with as close to a 2.5 or 3.5% increase as we can. I, you know, as I sit here today, I do not think that in order to fund all of the priority areas of this council, that we will be able to do anything less than 2.5%. But, you know, towns and cities have a much different budget process. Our budget process is, as I mentioned in the beginning, heavily reliant on the state aid. And the process, as the city manager can comment and is very familiar with, when it goes to the House of Representatives and the Senate, and then sometimes there is a conference committee budget that comes forward after that, it is very helpful for us, for them to have, which they've done in the past, some kind of joint resolution on local aid. Oftentimes, at the sort of house level of the process, that will come forward. We know that's the amount of local aid that we will get. But because our budget is almost 2/3 local aid between Chapter 70, unrestricted aid, et cetera, it is very difficult for us to have a more definite financial picture, but we are working with the numbers we have right now from the departments. And so the other kind of unknowns at this point are for charter schools. We have a preliminary assessment from the, the House, excuse me, H1, the governor's budget, and we've seen a $4 million increase, and that's sort of two-sided. There's about a $2 million increase in the assessment, but a $2 million reduction in the charter school reimbursement from what we saw last year. These are all expenses we need to fund up top before we can even consider some of the requests from the departments, just like our fixed costs. We have to, in the order of priority, you know, we have to fund all of our obligations, health insurance, pension, salaries for existing employees, and then we can look at everything else. And so once we have a more solid picture of, you know, those costs, then we can fine-tune, and we will have additional discussions at, at this level and perhaps at a finance subcommittee as updates along the way. But we do fully intend to hit the date of, of May, as I mentioned before, and we'll have a, a full budget document on your desk for that date. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Man, through to the council. Counselor, to answer, I think it's, it's unknown at this time. I think that, well, I know that the administration had asked all of our department heads to let us know what their full needs are, and I think that is extremely important, given the fact that I would think this would be my first real, well, my first full budget, if you would. It's vitally important that I understand what their full needs are. Now, over the next few months, it's going to be important to parse through what is a need, what is a want, and what we can actually afford. With the state aid coming in, it may or may not fluctuate over the next 30, 60, 90 days, with the House set to take it up in April and then, of course, the Senate in May. But month-to-month collections are really going to matter at that time to see if any additional monies do come in. The towns around us, most, and I can't speak to all, but most of them are at their levy capacity where most of us know that the city of Lowell is not. But I believe that the administration, as well as this council, is very, very concerned, of course, with ensuring that Lowell continues to be the affordable community that it is. So that is vitally important to this administration as well as to this council. We do know some of our concerns. I would not call them fixed, but at least we know that with our health insurance, the premiums and other obligations like pensions, we know where we're going to be. But being so reliant on state aid, I think that we need to continue to remain nimble over the next two to three months. I think that's the most important. But once again, this is the administration's ask, and that's where the $20 million came from, to find out what is exactly needed, what do we, what does the department heads feel? Some of the easier questions that you had asked earlier in regards to the fire trucks and whatnot, that's something that's been, obviously, going to be paid through ARPA monies, but it's still important to know that some of the vehicles that we have out there, should that be done on capital? Is there some additional cash that we may have at the end, at the end of this budget cycle that we will be able to pay some one-time expenses? Those are things that we're looking at, but I'm sure as we kind of dive deeper into our budget, we will see that those are things that may be affordable or may not be affordable. So I asked the council to take a look at this. This is something that, I've looked at previous budgets, this is how we've done this, but it's going to give us the opportunity, or more specifically, it's going to give me the opportunity to look at each department and fully understand how that department feels as though it needs to run 100% effectively. There have been many councilors who have come with great ideas, and there are things that we just can't do because we do not have particular items. And one particular item that just comes to mind, the Assistant City Manager and I were talking about this the other day, just in cameras. We have some cameras that work unbelievably well, and then other cameras that just don't. So we really need to make sure when we have people who are out, which still amazes me, as a side note, that seem to think dumping all of their construction or home waste someplace else is just, it's disheartening. It's disheartening to our residents and it's irritating, to be quite frank with you. So, you know, it seems like a little thing, but we don't have enough things like that that I believe we do need to, and I'll say double down on. But we have to ensure that it is affordable. We need to stay nimble over the next few months. I wish I could give you the exact answer right now as to what the percentage would be, but I don't think that would be fair. I think that the, the department heads have been working extremely hard to find out how to deliver the best services for the residents of the city at the best possible price.
Counselor Kishir?
You know, just a couple of statements that were made. The fire trucks are a major concern. The 2019s that were just purchased four years ago, one of them has been in the shop for who knows how long. You know, those E1s were not really a good purchase back then, and we're having problems with them, and we can't get the manufacturer to do things with them. And while they're out of service, we really need backup equipment that satisfies the needs. That's why I keep bringing up the fire truck thing, is we do have needs, and the public may not be aware of what's going on with the manufacturing. Somebody has to do something back and forth with E1 and why they're not coming back, but everyone points the finger back and forth between them. And I don't think it's really fair to use other communities' tax levy and say, we're not close, because we get a lot of state aid that they don't get. So it's comparing really an apple and an orange when we start looking at budgeting. And I understand, as the CFO brought up, a very, very good point. When you look at the charter schools, $4 million, if you do the number based off of what the CFO sent us in percentages that's given to us, he said for every $1.6 million that comes, that's upticked, it's 1%. So that $4 million is 2.4%. So if we're only going up 2.5%, that means the rest of the budget is really a reduction because we're looking at contracts and everything that have to be paid. So I think that there are things in here. The personnel cost that's in here, you also have a 2.5% approximately $6 million increase. Does that include the wage-study funds in overtime costs that are going to go up, or is that, hasn't been included in that number yet?
Mr. Baldwin?
That, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That, that number is included because we have programmed it into the 2023 budget in the salary reserve. So, yes, we have considered what I guess we'll refer to as Phase 1 of that, sorry, the salary review, but to do more or to visit other areas of city wages or compensation adjustment, we will likely be looking to the salary reserve again to do additional areas. The ones, however, that in Public Works will be funded, and that is the number attached to those.
The other thing that's always very interesting to me is the health insurance piece. You know, health insurance, all of Massachusetts got pushed into a GIC system because it was going to be this huge savings for everybody, and maybe it has been over the years, but it seems like a company has got extremely comfortable, and we're still seeing the increases. Have we had a study done where other comparable, comparable premiums are out there for other companies? And do we regularly look at that and say, yeah, we're still getting a bargain with GIC for the employees? Because as we watch this go up, we're watching employees' money go down, 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 and co-pays. They didn't really save anything. They went up to this 10% or the 5.1%, but including in that is also the employees' co-pays that have gone through the roof. And I think that's a concern for a lot of people, and when I look at the budget challenges, I agree with everything that's in here in the monies, but I think we've got to do better at the State House, and they're just not giving us the funding, and, you know, Mr. Manager's laughing because, you know, but it's a true statement down there. They're not looking at big cities, and you're looking, we're just, we're getting less and less services every day. So the only way to fight that is to manage better and make sure the product that we're putting out there has long-term savings. That's why we talk about road treatments. We talk about these things, is we're looking for long-term savings so that we don't have to do these things. But the health insurance thing, can you, are we really getting those savings? Because it doesn't seem like it if you're an employee.
Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Counselor, that's an excellent question. The health insurance savings, and I've seen this for many, many years, that the, the city achieved in the beginning are still there. So when the city in, I want to say 2012-ish, moved from a self-insured model with Blue Cross Blue Shield to the GIC through legislation that became available to municipalities at the time, there was substantial savings then. And so we, since that time, there have been increases, but the rate of increase has been less than what we saw when we were self-insured. Now, to your point directly, that, I don't know, and I'm fairly certain, we have not seen those kinds of savings at the employee level. So myself is a subscriber, but city employees, we've seen co-pays increase, a different model of health insurance, and those increases have continued year-over-year in terms of premiums, et cetera. But when compared, and certainly when compared on the employee share, so we split the cost, 75% is borne by the city and through the city budget, 25% is paid by the employee. As compared to our self-insured model with Blue Cross Blue Shield many years ago, yes. Now, in the, in the beginning, not in the beginning, I shouldn't say that, but when we moved to the GIC, there was an amount of money saved that was split in a similar fashion, 75, 25. The city used the 75% of our savings to fund the OPEB trust. We've talked about that a little bit with this council. We've made appropriations into that with free cash to try to address our long-term liabilities, the OPEB liability. At that same time, the employee share of approximately $3.1 million was set aside in a separate fund that I believe it was Counselor Noon made a request relative to this, in this term, has been sitting there for them ever since that time. And so it is, it's their money. It's incumbent upon the PEC to act on that money or to distribute it or to do something with it, and we have an agreement with them, but we have not seen a proposal with them for how to disburse those funds since that time. So another question that you asked, Counselor, was about year-over-year costs, and so we do continue to see those costs increase, and that is something that unfortunately, you know, many of the requests from department heads are great things, that the council certainly wants to see, that the residents want to see, but because our fixed cost challenges year-over-year are so great, we're unable to fund many of those, and that is challenges year-over-year are so great, we're unable to fund many of those, and that is the process that we're in. I hope that addresses some of your questions, but I'm happy to provide more information about the health insurance.
And I'll just leave more time for somebody else in a minute. My concern is as we go forward, every, since I've been here a year and three months, we've only seen additions to the workforce. We haven't seen any reductions anywhere. We've seen more and more jobs come on, so that means our OPEB liabilities are going to go up, that means everything's going up. And in this next current budget, positions that haven't been filled in a long time, is there any will to start looking at these and reorging and saying, "Okay, we can do better with it this way or that way"? Because there's a lot of jobs that are long-term not filled. Currently, how many positions in the city are not filled? Do we know that answer?
Mr. Baldwin, or Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through to the council. Counselor, the, overall, there is a constant turnover with employees, and a lot of it has to do with wages. I know that we've had this discussion in the past in regards to wages, but it is true. Some of the jobs that still remain open, they remain open simply because the disparity in pay between what we're paying and what the public is paying, excuse me, the private sector is paying. We have experienced an uptick, and then we experience some issues back and forth. Right now, we're back into what I would, what I would term as a little bit of a drought. Are we looking to reconfigure some departments? I would say yes. Does that mean getting, shedding some jobs? I would say probably yes. But however, I think that some of the jobs that aren't being filled would, may, may very well be because we need to continue to look at what the salary structures are at this time. That's one of, that's how I see things over the past 10 months. We have things that are going on, but I do, I do believe, so to get to your, your final question, I believe, is there restructuring happening within departments? That, that would be a yes. Will we end up shrinking jobs? I would have to wait. I would have to wait on that, that particular answer, to answer it correctly.
I don't want anyone to think we're trying to shrink jobs. You know, that's not what I'm getting at. I'm looking at unfilled positions. I don't want anyone to go home and say, "I'm going to get laid off," or anything like that, because that can send a very negative message. What I'm really thinking about is, okay, this position's been vacant, is it really needed? We should be doing that through HR. Every single time there's an open position is say, "Is this a needed position? Can we function without it?" I don't want anyone to leave here thinking that I'm thinking about shrinking anyone's job.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through to the council. Let me clarify my statement. The unfilled position, we're not trying to, we're not downsizing anyone's job. The unfilled position, there are, there are times that we will put a position out, and we will get no one to apply. So let me clarify again. We are not downsizing anyone's job. That's a very good catch on that. We are not downsizing anyone's job. However, are we looking in departments to see if they could work differently? The answer is yes. Will we not fill those unfilled positions? I would like to hold on that until, until we've completed what we're trying to accomplish. Will this happen before July 1st of this year? I think this will continue to be a work in progress through different departments. So reorganization of different departments, I would like to say would happen throughout the city prior to July 1st, but I wouldn't be able to say that that would be accurate.
Your side, Counselor Gitchia.
I just have, I want to thank you for highlighting the charter school stuff, because when you look at all of this, you've got a 2.4% increase right there alone. And then when you look at, you're only looking for the 2.5, you're thinking you can cut down to that piece, you can see, and you're only getting $583,000 on the backside of an increase. It's extremely hard to get to that. And what I'm worried about is the resources to keep employees, not the money. Sometimes department heads will put in things because they think it'll make them successful, and they think you're not listening because they're not getting it done. So they sit up here a week in and a week out and get beat up about something isn't getting done, and they won't say, "Well, I put in, tried to put in the budget four or five times to get this kind of resource, but it just gets cut out." So I just want to make sure that employees feel that they're getting the resources they need to be successful, because that's what retention's about. It's not so much about, somebody took a job, and the most uncomfortable thing is to be, to leave a job for another job. And I just want to make sure that the resources, because we can't see it, I don't know, and then you hear, people don't want to say things across the thing because that's their bosses. And at the end of the day, are we giving people the resources to make the public have the public safety, the schools and resources that we need? Thank you.
Counselor Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my recommendation is to go to a financial subcommittee. I'll make that, you know, I'm sure I have more than a few questions, I'm sure my colleagues do, but for the sake of time, I'll, I'll make a motion to send us to a financial committee. I would just request that if it does do that, that we look at maybe some insurance options. I know that LOPE is at 75% right now, to see if savings can be made there. And then also the prioritization that the manager spoke about. I know, you know, there have been hundreds of motions that have been filed, and I imagine most of them come with a price tag to it as well, so I know that's very difficult on the administration to, to see what, you know, should be spent on, what can be spent on. But those are a couple of things that I'll be looking forward to at a subcommittee, some answers on. Thank you.
Motion by Counselor Rourke before the finance subcommittee, second by Counselor Mercier on FCI. The motion is passed, and I know counselors had their hands up before, but given the consideration of time, that's why this motion is referred to that. Can everybody wait till the finance subcommittee, or is there one more comment here? Just one. Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be very brief. Thank you, Connor, for putting this very informative report together. The first thing that caught my eye in the whole report was the possible increase of the budget of 12.26%. And I don't know for sure if we're going to raise it to that price, because that's very, very difficult. So could you reassure the residents of the city that we're going to try to work and do whatever we can to not bring it that high? Because people are concerned, and people have heard this statement, and I want to, I don't want people to have to run into cardiac arrest or anything like that. So if we could just address that very briefly as to, are we working to reduce that so that it, is that the?
Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, and through to the council. Counselor, that will not be 12.26%. I would go into cardiac arrest if that were the case, so that will not be happening. It was just trying to set the framework about the challenges before us with, with what we have. So once again, we always have a wish list of the things that we want, but we will bring it back to the needs and the, and what we can actually afford. 12.26% is absolutely unequivocally not going to happen.
Okay, thank you so much.
Welcome.
I did run for my heart medicine, but I'm all right. Thank you.
Counselor, I took mine this morning, so that's.
Okay, absolutely. One last comment, because this, it is going to refer to the finance subcommittee. Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make this point before we got to the finance subcommittee. Just, you know, we talk a lot about this, trying to figure out where we're going and having as much information as possible. So I just want to ask through you to the auditor, the monthly munis reports, I haven't seen them in a couple of months. I don't know if my, if I'm just not seeing them in my email or not, but I think having that information would be helpful as we move forward. So I just asked the auditor to send those reports before, whenever this subcommittee gets scheduled for.
Okay. Through Mr. Manager to Madam Solicitor. Auditor.
Thank you. Counselor, those reports I do put on the website every month, so they're there. I haven't been doing a communication because it comes so frequently, but all the reports are up to date through February 20, 28th.
Okay, great. I'll look on the website then. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the last thing I wanted to mention is just, if the CFO could just make some general comments about the things we're seeing in the overall economy in terms of interest rates raising, thanks to the Fed and other, other things, as well as, you know, the banking system instability that we've seen over the past few weeks, and what kind of an impact that has on our process here and the budget as a, as a whole. I think it's an important thing to cover now, here before we take this next step. So, thank you.
Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you. Another excellent question, Counselor. You know, generally, in the economy, we are seeing a trend of the same. And by that, you know, I mentioned inflationary pressures in my introductory remarks, and by that, we, you know, these are pressures on fuel prices or commodity prices, which sometimes impact our capital budget, but also impact the operations for motor vehicle fuel and gas, or other products that the departments use. We are still seeing that as it relates to sort of the bond market. That is something where I have particular concern. And, and what, what that will mean is we will likely accelerate some of our borrowings, which will have a budgetary impact on our debt service. So we will, you know, we are traditionally in the market for short, in the short-term market in the, the spring or early summer months, and then again in the fall for long-term borrowings. We're likely going to need to accelerate the amount we would borrow for, particularly for the high school. We borrowed about $20 million back in the fall of, this, this past fall at a rate of about 3%. You know, we're going to see those rates continue to increase. Counselor, you mentioned what the Fed is doing, that has a direct impact on, on the markets for the borrowings. We do, everything is all related there. On the banking side, I know that Counselor Scott has a motion, because it's been advertised already for Tuesday's council meeting, and we, the treasurer and I will put together a report on that. We, we think that, you know, despite what everyone is hearing from the Silicon Valley Bank, our investments are, our banks are sound. You know, our operating funds are with Enterprise Bank, but we have other investments through the MMDT. We're talking to those banks actively about ways to collateralize and make the city funds more secure, so we will come back with a full report on that. But I feel confident that the funds we have on deposit are sound and not subject to some risk that some of the, what you've heard in the news, some of those investments are subject to.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
No other comments. That's complete the information reports. Need a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Scott, second by Counselor Leahy. Motion is passed. The next item on agenda is 5.3, communication, the resignation of Sidney Lang from Community Preservation Committee. Any comments or questions by any member? Here none. Need a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Yem, second by Counselor Mercier on FCI. Post a note, eyes have it. Motion's carry. 5.4, communication, city manager requests out-of-state travel. One's LPD, and the second one is HHS. Any comments or questions by anyone? Counselor Gitchia.
Through you to the manager. Mr. Manager, on the per diem, why isn't that across the board the same? I don't think the $50 meets the need. There's one that's 59, and the other one is 50. Why, I know it's probably contractually, but how come isn't a number like right across the board the same?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. That's actually by department, that's something we've looked at. There's 50, there's 59. I've actually, I thought we saw something a little bit lower than that. That's something we've looked at to try to bring across the board. We couldn't send somebody someplace to have breakfast for what we had recently sent somebody for a day. So that's something that has been brought to our attention, that would have to be increased, obviously.
So is that something?
Especially in Washington, DC.
Is that something that's easily fixed, or is that like a negotiations back and forth?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. That's something that would obviously cost additional monies, and that's something that we would send out department-wide.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here none. Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Leahy, second by Counselor Robinson. Mr. Cloak, roll call, please.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Mayor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Counselor Gitchia.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
That's 10 yeas.
All right, we now will jump over. We took the votes from the city manager at the previous meeting already, so we now will jump on the agenda to the Section 8, which are the ordinances from the city manager. We start 8.1, ordinance, amen zoning, extension, TTF.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, we got to go order 60-day trial, 7.1.
Or did we miss something?
7.1. 60-day trial.
Okay, yep. Thank you, Mr. Cloak. There's a lot of items checked and not checked also. These are the item, agenda seven, orders from city managers, 7.1, the order of 60-day trial. Any comments or questions by the council before I make, take the reading? Here none. Wait for reading, and second reading by title. City of Lowell and city council order pursuant to Chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Lowell, Massachusetts, concerning Section 266-6, they are entitled temporary experimental regulations. Temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for a period up to 60 days. Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Janess. Mr. Cloak, roll call, please.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Mayor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Counselor Gitchia.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
10 yeas.
Thank you. We now go to the Section 8, ordinances from city manager. 8.1, ordinance, amen zoning, extension, TTF zone, 38 Nielsen Avenue. Any comments or questions? Here none. Need a motion to refer this to the planning board for a report and recommendation, and to public hearing on May 2nd, 2023, at 7:00 PM by Counselor Janess, second by Counselor Robinson on FCI. Post a note, the motion, the eyes have it. The motion is passed. Section 9, reports of the subcommittee, we start 9.1, the Parks and Recreation Subcommittee, March 13, 2023. Any report, Counselor Mercier?
Yes. Thank you, there is a report. On Monday, March 13th, the Parks and Recreation Subcommittee met in the mayor's reception room, meeting to be televised at a later date. Present were subcommittee members, myself and Counselor Gitchia, along with CFO Connor Baldwin and Assistant CFO Austin Ball, Lisa Golden, Director of Health and Human Services, Peter Fattacanti, Recreation Program Director and Planner, Haley Williams, Board of Parks Secretary, who was gracious enough to put the Board of Parks handbook out, Shannon Cohen, Superintendent of Parks, Kelly Oaks, our auditor, two Board of Parks members, Keith Rudy and Thomas Conter, city clerk, Michael Gary, and Robert Hunt, President of the Friends of Tyler Park, and Corey Williams, First Assistant to City, to the City Solicitor. I wanted to say the whole city hall was there, but these are the people, I should have said everybody was there. The purpose of this meeting was to address the motion from Counselor Gitchia and discuss many unanswered questions, such as who issues permits and how is this done? Haley Williams, the Secretary of the Board of Parks, who was relatively new, but yet very knowledgeable, told us that the Board of Parks issues permits through an online permitting software called MyRec. To manage the annual permitting of Lowell's parks, fields, and other recreational amenities, the city launched MyRec during August of 2016, and the total amount billed through the system since going live since 2016 was $371,638.47. We question why some fees were reduced, such as a birthday party where little maintenance, often the party was needed versus another, after the party was needed versus another birthday party with more people, more services needed. The amount of people attending, et cetera, was permitted, so the price was a little higher. We, as a subcommittee, feel that because of so many concerns and questions at the schedule of fees within the city's Code of Ordinance, Chapter 150 should be revisited and made clearer so that residents know what to expect. Collection of receipts associated with the permit is handled through the Recreation Division of the Department of Health and Human Services. This is, there is also a list of priority users for the parks and fields, et cetera. First Lowell High School, Lowell-based youth organization, nonprofits, returning users, Lowell residents, and then non-residents in that order. All at a first-come, first-served basis in that particular area. Fee structures is also. Fee structures is also determined by what the team or group or a person needs, such as lights, custodial fees, trash collection, et cetera. It was determined that the Board of Parks and the handbook needs to be improved and upgraded, and a policy plan should be in place in how we can be more efficient in collecting fees. It was discussed that when making payment through the MyRec online system and someone had a problem with the date and had to cancel, that we could not return their money. But according to our auditor, the treasurer's office can in fact utilize a mechanism in place to refund their money. This is a short-term transaction in the treasurer's office. We do the same thing for cemeteries, so I don't know why we can't do it for the parks. So when you lock in a date and it rains and you need your money back and you, and you can't, you can ensure return your money within, to that person within 28 days. We discuss also how we can all work together to tighten up the Board of Parks Handbook and establish a policy plan consistent of what you see that would benefit your board, that works for you and is more uniformed. We need a better stream of a communication where everyone works together. We had one gentleman, Robert Hunt, make an excellent point. Robert is president of the Friends of Tyler Park. His group use what we call green space, which is considered a passive park. There are 54 passive parks in the city, but only 12 passive parks are used, in this case, and the green space of Tyler Park. His fees are waived, in my opinion, rightfully so. They give three free summer concerts, plus they have movie night, and they provide food, hot dogs, et cetera, all free. They give four scholarships and donate toys for kids. They encourage community participation. They have two major cleanups within the neighborhood group in that park. Tyler Park was voted the cleanest, best, well-run park. So the Board of Parks should have a section listed as passive park slash green space and waive fees if done for the benefit of the city residents at no charge, such as in this particular case. If an event is at a park that is listed as a green space and a fee or a charge is required through admission to the event, no fee should be waived. These are the things that we should have in writing in the handbook or the policy so that we know just where we stand. Robert Hunt stated that the Friends of Tyler Parks survive their sponsorship and everything is free to the public. They maintain that park and that everything that comes in goes out, so they get sponsorship. That's why they don't need to, you know, they, they, they don't collect any money through people using that park. Keith Rudy, a member of the Board of Parks, agreed with the subcommittee that there were no clear policy and procedures in place, and he was asked questions that the handbook couldn't provide an answer for. And if that means tweaking the ordinance to make update changes, this group that attended our meeting was willing to do so. We have to have clear and precise direction and guidelines to follow. And they will, they were all willing to put their heads together to do just that. There are six areas outlined already in the handbook. As Counselor Gitchia pointed out, it's a table of contents, how to request a permit, and rules and regulations. They're the first two that the group will work on. We also, for example, need to define what a passive park slash green space area can be used for. This meeting is a work in progress. We will follow up in one month. A meeting was, a motion was made and seconded to come back in a month with further discussion for changes or additions that should be followed. This is my report of progress on the subcommittee. If any of my members have anything to add, please feel free.
Need a member? Here none, need a motion to accept reports, report of progress by Counselor Robinson, second by Counselor Gishia. Motion is passed. The, the next report, I understand that the chairperson of that committee is not here, but maybe somebody else can make a report on a housing subcommittee joint with zoning subcommittee of March 21st, 2023. Anyone who would like to make a brief report? Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since the chair is not here, I would like to defer this to the next week for the full report. The, the subcommittee, both are coming back on April 1st to continue the discussion. We didn't finish it due to the time constraints, so we will have it on the 1st. And after that, we will give a full report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll table this to the next meeting. The next item on the agenda is section number 10 on petitions. 10.1, claims aid property damage. Any comments or questions here none? Need a motion to refer to law department for a report and recommendation by Counselor Noon, second by Counselor Leahy. The motion is passed. 10.2 is miscellaneous. Roger Canoe, Yang for benefit of Shaima, MyMeat, request installation of handicap parking sign at 139 Cumberland Road. Any comments or questions here none? Need a motion to refer to transportation engineer for report and recommendation by Counselor Rock, second by Counselor Mercier. The motion is passed. We now are at the city council motions. We'll start with 11.1. Counselor Gishia request city manager provide a detailed list of roads that will have line striping, crosswalks painted, and detailed work for permanent markings during upcoming season, second by Counselor Janess. Counselor Gishia?
Mr. Mayor, because I like to see you smile, the motion speaks for itself.
Nothing can put a bigger smile on my face, Counselor. On favor, Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. Just, this kind of goes along with my motion down the line. I just want to make sure that with all the line striping, Mr. Manager, that specifically in front of the firehouses, they need those yellow spaces and safe zones where they can turn the trucks in and out. So specifically for the firehouses also. Thank you.
Good comment, Counselor. On favor of CI, post say no, eyes have it. Motion is passed. We now go to 11.2. Counselor Gishia request city manager report on all paid invoices since MyRec was established for parks and facilities rentals. The group who paid the funds, the date of the rental and the date of payment of rental, second by Counselor Yem. Counselor Gishia?
Motion speaks for itself.
2 for 2. No other comments or questions on favor of CI, post say no, eyes have it. Motion is passed. Motion 11.3. Counselor Gishia request city manager report on all waived fees for parks and facilities rentals. The group who had the fees waived and the date of waived rental, second by Counselor Mercier. 3 for 3 in this case would be good.
Three in a row, speaks for itself.
Three strike is good. You're, you're, you're a good pitcher. Any other comments or questions on favor of CI, post say no, eyes have it. Motion is carry. 11.4. Counselor Gishia request city manager have the proper department report to the city council. What portion on the street index of 1418 to 1765, Melisack Street, is on the repaving list, second by Counselor Noon? Counselor Gishia?
Motion speaks for itself.
It's a great day for baseball, Counselor. On favor of CI, post say no, eyes have it. Motion is carry. 11.5. Counselor Gishia request city manager have proper department put all city employee union contracts on the city's website, second by Counselor Robinson. Counselor Gishia?
Motion speaks for itself.
Wonderful. Thank you, Counselor. Your, your, this is history-making today. We are taking up 11.6. We now go to 11.7. Counselor Noon request city manager provide city council with a report concerning the number of individuals using city programs to aid residents in housing, purchasing homes in the city. Said report should include ways the city can better advertise such programs, second by Counselor Scott. Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe that the city have done some good job in term of, you know, helping particularly first home buyers and those who need assistance. So we, we need to also look at better way to advertise, given that we have now a new communication department, so to push out some of those message. It'll be, you know, helping first home buyers, you know, through Mayor Mac Housing Partnership or whatever program that we do have. You have the new communication department, push all those methods through, through that department, you know, as wide as you can, because, so that all resident of Lowell can be benefited from it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions here none? On favor of CI, post say no, eyes have it. Motion is passed. The next motion is 11.8. Counselor Noon request city manager provide city council with a report concerning the number of seniors in the city using, utilizing senior work-off program to pay off their taxes, second by Counselor Mercier. Counselor Noon?
I think this program, I think a while back, it was Counselor Mercier's who pushed for this and have it on the table. It's a senior work-off abatement program to help them pay off their taxes. I'm not sure how wisely, you know, we, you know, message this out to seniors out there who could benefit from it. Again, using that new communication department that we have, push that message out. You know, I think, you know, what, what do you have? How many is probably, I would say, a 523, I believe. You're talking about having about 20 space, you know, and only 12 seniors utilize it. So, you know, so one of pushes out as, as, as wide as you can so that our seniors who are impacted by, you know, either probably tax increase and whatnot can utilize this program. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. Through you to the manager. There are a lot of people that are retiring earlier, a lot of people looking for extra work too, so maybe this kind of relates. Maybe there's programs or that we could implement that people who still want to participate and help out, get a few hours in and work. Maybe we could intertwine this or whatever, we could. So over the last couple of years, there's been a lot of people asking, you know, they've retired from wherever their work is, they're looking for another 20 hours, so something to take a look at. Thank you.
Good. Look forward to that report. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. I agree with my colleagues here. I've been approached by quite a few people asking if there's any opportunities for part-time work, whether it be a greeter or anything along those lines. I mean, if, if there is opportunities, I'd love to work with the administration to see how we provide that. And one thing that's popped up three times so far, just today during discussion, comms, 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 marketing, 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 and promotion, promotion, promotion. So it's definitely a need. And I hope this budget season, the manager comes forward with any, any requests or recommendations that they think they need from the council to empower you to really get on this promotional marketing push that I think we're all demanding. Thank you.
No other comments on favor of CI, post say no. The motion is passed. Item 11.9. Counselor Noon request city manager provide city council with a report concerning whether any grants exist the city can pursue to support the creation of warming and cooling centers in the city to aid the homeless population, second by Counselor Gishia. Counselor Noon?
The motion speak for itself, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. No other comments on favor of CI, post say no, eyes have it. Motion is passed. The next motion is 11.10. Counselor Noon, request city manager set a date to recognize the victims of the COVID pandemic, second by Counselor Robinson. Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought this is something that, you know, we, we need to do. You know, we know that a family across this country has, you know, mourned the loss of a loved one or burial friend because of COVID. It has disrupted, you know, many lives, you know. During that time, we can grieve our loved one. So maybe I've noticed we can create some sort of a healing or resting space to commemorate their life loss because of COVID.
No other comments on favor of CI. The motion is passed. 11.11. Counselor Noon request city manager update the city council regarding the enforcement of no parking 20 feet from the corner throughout the city, second by Counselor Rock. Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we, we were at, you know, just about every neighborhood meeting and particularly the neighborhood subcommittee met over at the Center World, chaired by Counselor Mercier's and I know Counselor Rock, and Counselor Gitchia and Counselor Robinson was there. The concerns about the corners, and it has been a concern for some time. You know, we have, we have it in the ordinance, you know, but the enforcement part of it, we have not done a good job at it in many area concerning 20 feet from the corners, you know. And so, and it's also, it's abstract, you know, you can't see, and accident happen because of that. So, you know, just asking the city to look into it and how we can do a better job enforce it, you know, maybe through education, maybe what? I don't know. But just, you know, just want to, just relay the message, the concern of the resident, particularly the, regarding to, regarding a no parking, you know, 20 feet from the corner. Thank you.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an excellent motion by Counselor Noon. We've all been in the subcommittee, in the neighborhood meetings and heard from residents talk about how, especially for me in back central and Sacred Heart, how difficult it can be with cars parked at the corners to be able to pull out of houses. And it's not just the corners, it's also at the intersections that they're not supposed to be parked in. We've placed a lot of no parking signs in those areas. They've actually knocked them down, a lot of the residents. Obviously, that doesn't make it legal still to park there, and we need enforcement to happen, whether there's a sign there or not. I did see in Salem, Mass. that they paint the curbs red for like a visual cue to let people know not to park there. I mean, at least then they wouldn't knock the sign over and, you know, it's just maybe another thing to look at. Thank you.
Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's nothing more frustrating than to come out of a side street and go on to a main street and it's so, and there's a car right on the corner and you have to be almost out in the middle of the street and you're taking your life in your hands because the cars are coming by at a pretty good clip, and it's scary. I want to know, and I know that it's an ordinance that you don't park 20 feet from a corner, but I don't think the average resident knows that. I wonder if we have any ticket books from the police department with a warning. I always believe that you should be able to give a warning first for someone that doesn't know. Once you give that warning, at least you warn them that, that you shouldn't park there. I wonder if there's any police ticket books that have the tickets with warnings and a fine for parking on the corner. I want to know, what is the fine? How much is that fine? Because if you get in a warning, if I didn't know the law and I parked in the corner, right on the corner, and they told me not to park there with a ticket, I don't think I'd park there again. So I want to know, what is the fine? And do we have warnings for that? Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. Again, it's pulling out of my street even, up Cloav, Elmwood, any of these. You're trying to nose out onto Bridge Street and the opposite other side of Bridge Street coming down. You have cars parked in the corners and your nose is out in Bridge Street traffic to even see around the bend in some instances. I think the, the warnings on cars is fine. The paper blows away, I never received it. Signage clearly marked, I think, is one way to go. But again, we have a book of ordinances that if it's not enforced, it's not worth the paper it's written on. I mean, this shouldn't be something that even takes a phone call. I think we have people that are driving the streets regularly, routinely, whether it's pocket enforcement, whether it's our law enforcement. If you glance over and see a SUV or a white truck with ladders or whatever it may be parked at the corner, I mean, I don't see why we're not pulling over and addressing that situation as opposed to waiting for a call to come in and then circling back. It's, this should be happening routinely. This is something that everyone can see. You drive down any street in the city and you can identify this problem. So anything that we can do to curb this is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. I would be in favor of taking a look at if it's feasible to paint the curbing's red, you know. Trouble, we could do a pilot program and, you know, we've said in the past that we don't want to do it because paint wears off, but if it lasts five years, people get the message, so maybe we could explore that. Thank you.
Counselor Rock?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, quickly. Mr. Manager, do we still have that neighborhood team for the police department?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Ms. Maythor, to the council. We do have a neighborhood team that'll be coming together with Mass Hire, so we would possibly have the ability to do something this summer.
So I do know that, you know, the police So I do know that, you know, the police do have the ability to issue citations through prior experience. So is it possible that, you know, for a director for a couple of weeks maybe to just to hit this problem? Because, you know, they are seeing the same cars, the same intersections every morning. You know, I did call the city manager concerning one where a school bus couldn't take a left because both sides of the street had cars right to the end. So I don't know if I have the ability to even ask you to do that, but maybe a suggestion would be is to have that Neighborhood Service, I forget the name of it, just to go for a week or two. Again, it's the same cars you see every morning. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councillor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have video of a school bus tried to make a right turn on to the street that was blocked because people parked on both sides of the intersection. The bus driver tried three times, and finally he gave up and go to a different street. I mentioned there's a fire on that street. The fire truck can't maneuver and go through. Life could be lost because of that. My question is that on my street, there's a lot of residential parking stickers. So we have the enforcement. Can the person who do enforcing the residential sticker can also issue a ticket for someone parking within that twenty feet of the intersection? That's just my question to you through the manager. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, to the council. Councillor, that's something we're looking at between the police department and potentially increasing parking enforcement with the parking office. As we all know, the parking kiosks have been ordered. We do anticipate them in the next few weeks. So the, as I'd stated earlier, we're looking at different departments to see if we can rework departments, getting into the neighborhoods to enforce parking. That's actually, I apologize, you caught me off guard because that's what we're discussing, from the meeting that we're just in with the parking department as well, with that happening. So that's, this is all something that has been discussed, but I think we're going to try to roll it out within the, once we have the new kiosks up and running. Would we do it citywide? I would probably say no. We might, we might pick a pilot area to go after, you know, a certain segment of the city and then grow it from there, whether it be, you know, it takes us, takes us a month or month to month to figure out what the positives are, what we could do better at, and then continue through different sections of the neighborhood, of different neighborhoods.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Manager. Through you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager. My comment is that if a person, if the parking enforcement go out and issue a ticket for someone parking without the residential sticker, why can't that person also issue a ticket when somebody parking blocked the intersection? That's my, we'll try to, you know, utilize the personnel, but it's up to you. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. I believe that would be the authority, and I might lean on the city solicitor on this, that authority might lie with the police department, not with the parking authority, with the parking enforcement authority. Mr. Solicitor, would that sound correct?
Yeah, that is correct. That sort of is a distinction between, you know, enforcing the actual passes themselves as opposed to parking in a, you know, in a section of the street where it's, you know, by ordinance, you're not allowed to. So there is a distinction. I think that could restrict who can and can't issue a ticket in that scenario.
Thank you.
Councillor Robinson?
Thank you. Would that be something to look at then? Would we be able to identify these twenty-foot zones and maybe do something that would give our parking enforcement offices the teeth to write those tickets? Because I know a lot of times, just in the regular workday, they take the vehicle that the city provides from the garage and out they go into one of the neighborhoods to monitor different city lots. So en route, I mean, if they had the authority to do it, it might be something, you know, worth taking a look at.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah, absolutely. That's something we'd take a look at.
Councillor Gishir, you have your hands up also?
I did, thank you. I think this is an excellent motion from councillor Nguyen, and it states clearly in it, the problem is enforcement. It isn't all these other things. We need to get out and write tickets. Tickets will stop people. It's the same thing. We can change the speed limit signs. We can go down on everything. But if we're not enforcing the laws that we have on the books, no one's going to adhere to it. So I think a lot of discussion comes right back to the will of the council is enforcement. Let's just get out and write the tickets and get this changed so our phones stop ringing.
No other comments or questions on favor, say no. The eyes have it. Motion is carried. The next motion is 11.12. Councillor Janes requests city manager have law department provide a legal opinion on what changes may be required to change council rules and public comment procedures for other public meetings in light of the Baron versus Kalenda decision from the SJC on March 7, 2023, second by councillor Gishir. Councillor Janes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For anyone who's unaware, this Baron versus Kalenda case had to do with public comment in a board of selectmen meeting here in the Commonwealth. The Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court came down with a ruling that basically said that what this board did was incorrect. So before we step over any lines we shouldn't step over, I was just hoping we could have the law department take a quick spin through our city council rules as well as our procedures for all our boards and commissions and just make sure that we're doing what we say and what we say is in compliance with the current interpretation of open meeting law and everything else. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none on favor, say no. The eyes have it. Motion is carried. Motion 11.13, councillor Leahy requests city manager have property department provide a line striping schedule for parking lots in schools and parks throughout the city, second by councillor Musia. Councillor Leahy?
Thank you. Motion is very clear and speaks for itself. Thank you.
Excellent comment, councillor Leahy. No other comments on favor, say no. The eyes have it. Motion is passed. 11.14, councillor Rook requests city manager have the proper department look into the services of such applications like Aqua Hawk or Water Smart to enhance residents' water use, second by councillor Scott. Councillor Rook?
Thank you. Quickly, Mr. Mayor, it's a notification system that I think can be used within the city. A number of Massachusetts cities and towns already have it. It's basically an alert system for different, you know, if water's running high or, you know, if there's a water burst in the house or something like that, it alerts the consumer. There's no cost to the residents. So if it's something that's worth using and looking into, I think it'd be beneficial. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none on favor, say no. The eyes have it. Motion is passed. Motion 11.15, councillor Yem requests city manager look into creating a bicentennial celebration commission to include low residents, neighborhood groups, business, nonprofit, and the religious organizations, local, state, and federal government representatives, as well as educational institutions, second by councillor Robinson. Councillor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, before I comment on the motion, I just want to say that I'm in support of a case requesting to the council to set aside a hundred thousand to prepare for the bicentennial celebration. I believe that a hundred thousand may not be enough for this type of celebration. So therefore, I would like to see that the city create an independent entity, bicentennial celebration commission comprised of those individuals listed in the motion, to run the event, raise and receive donation in addition to what the city will set aside a hundred thousand. And this way, we engage the residents and all the stakeholders to buy into this celebration. I'm pleasantly surprised that it's a steering committee already, and the steering committee that came up with the logo. I pass it out, and this logo, it's a Low 200. However, this logo lack of identity. Why would I say that? Because there are about twenty-six cities and towns in USA that has the name Low. So without the identity, we could be Low Indiana or Low Vermont. So when I said identity, what is our identity? When someone come to visit Low, we ask them, what do you think of Low? When we go to Paris, their identity is the Eiffel Tower. The same thing with London, you know. So I think Low would be, since we celebrate the 200, the city hall would be our identity because everybody recognized the city of Low through the city hall. And on the back of the fly that I pass it out, it's a sample of different logo by different cities and town that they created, and they have their own identity. Councillor Leahy loved the Key West 200. He said, are we going to go celebrate there? And I say, yeah, I'm in. Yeah. So this is about the identity, and this is what we would like to see the bicentennial celebration commission will come up with, with a logo that identified us as a unique cities and town. And with this, I'm hoping that all the residents will buy in, and we will have a big celebration to celebrate the 200 anniversary. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none on favor, say no. The eyes have it. Motion is passed. The next motion is 11.16. Councillor Robinson requests city manager explore the feasibility of subdividing any of the less attractive parcels in the HCID, second by councillor Musia. Councillor Robinson?
Motion speaks for itself.
Thank you councillor. No other comment on favor, say no. The motion is passed. Motion 11.17, councillor Robinson requests city manager have the proper department provide a report on what types of payouts has the city realized over the past five years in accrued benefits to hourly mid and upper management members due to retirement or any other termination of service, including names, dates, positions, and payout amounts, second by councillor Yem. Councillor Robinson?
Motion speaks for itself.
Thank you councillor, on favor, say no. The eyes have it. Motion is carried. Motion number 11.18. We're only going to go to motion 11.23. So we add 11.18. So it's a big progress. Councillor Robinson requests city manager provide a report on the process used to attract potential development in the HCID, second by councillor Janes. Councillor Robinson?
This one's taking a look and approaching it differently. I know we've been sitting with the parcels available, and this is something that, if feasible, could we consider coming up with a concept that we'd like to see? So we have some control at least, and put it out in the form of RFP and CAFD developers would be able to come in and meet those demands as opposed to us waiting and letting them tell us what they envision or, because they're going to be profit-driven. Whereas if we have an opportunity to say this is what the city's looking for in this particular lot, I mean, I just think it's thinking differently about something that we've been sitting on for quite some time. Thank you.
No other comments on favor, say no. The eyes have it. Motion is passed. The next motion is 11.19, also by councillor Robinson, request city manager provide a council with an update on our 2023 goals around hiring of summer youth employment opportunities, second by councillor Nguyen. Councillor Robinson?
I think this was already answered. So I believe that we just had an answer on this.
Would you like to withdraw this motion?
Last Tuesday. So I think this is pretty good. I'm thankful for the motion response on this.
Okay. Motion is withdrawn, councillor Robinson. The next motion is 11.20. Councillor Robinson requests city manager work with the administration to establish an account dedicated to maintaining and repairing public art installations as well as identifying funding mechanism, second by councillor Rook. Councillor Robinson?
We have a lot of installations, whether it be murals, pieces of public art, as you can see this past six months in particular. And so I think we also have to consider, how do we fund the long-term maintenance of all of these installations and mural pieces? So it might be well worth taking a look at. Thank you.
No other comments on favor. Motion is passed. Motion number, councillor Leahy, the motion was passed already.
Quickly on this, through you the manager, the public utility boxes, like for example, the, you know, so there's one like outside the Lincoln School, like that's just, looks awful. It's been that way for a few years. We're trying to get that painted. So this could be part of that motion, trying to look around at what we can beautify and what we need to work on. So if we could include that in the motion too. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, would you have to make comment now?
Yeah, just a very brief comment. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. That is something that we have been discussing with Ms. DeRoges as far as some of the monies that were discussed earlier today, how to ignite, or I should say reignite, our artist community and tackling some of those, I would say, smaller items, i.e. electrical boxes like that. So that's right in line, councillor.
Any other comments? The motion's already passed. Thank you. The next motion is motion 11.21. Councillor Robinson and councillor Yem request city manager have the proper department provide a detailed report showing different pathways to install a large-scale refrigerated outdoor skating rink, as well as some suggested strategic location ideas. Councillor Robinson or councillor Yem?
Thank you. I think this is an opportunity to possibly bring in public-private partnership. Maybe there's an organization that would consider a project like this and be looking for corporate name or sponsorship opportunities. We've seen, it was brought to my attention by one of my colleagues, they actually have a company, and I believe my colleague might speak to it. They have a company that did it in Boston at the Fenway. We saw this in Montreal, and we saw the impact it has on the community. It provides next to nothing cost to the residents and to the visitors that use it. Now, it's a matter of gathering the information and seeing what is the cost to get a project like this off the ground and what are some key locations. But again, I think it's well worth taking a look at. And I'd love to see if we could formulate maybe even a committee to start discussing these large-scale projects. Thanks.
Councillor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In addition to providing some recreational in the wintertime for family who may not be able to travel far out of Low, to bring their children and to skate in the park in the city of Low. In addition, I see this as an economic development. We saw in Montreal, the family bring their children, they come, and afterward, they go to the local restaurant to get something to drink and eat afterward. And that's generating additional business opportunity for our city and create more jobs as well.
Councillor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Robinson mentioned, I had brought forward some information to him about the rink at 401 Park. It's outside my daughter's college campus. It's an, it's an independent company that runs it. It's there all winter. It starts in the fall, goes right through the whole winter. It just was taken down, I noticed this past week. It ties in with all the area restaurants there. It's crowded all the time, busy. It would be a great opportunity to bring college students probably to the downtown area too from UMass Lowell, and a great economic development engine. I think this is a great motion. Thank you.
No other comments on favor, say no. The motion is passed. The next motion is 11.22, a motion by councillor Robinson, councillor Yem, and by myself, request city manager work with Mill City Grow and other community stakeholders to explore the feasibility of developing a year-round regional indoor/outdoor farmers' culinary market with food court and public cooking classroom space. Who would like to go first? Councillor Robinson?
Thank you. Again, there's a couple markets that this idea is spurred from. Montreal, Jean-Telon, and Seattle has, I think it's Pike's Peak. This kind of, I've had preliminary conversations with a couple of community partners, and I think there is a strong desire to really look into a project like this. Centralized culinary hub off of produce, any kind of culinary-related, whether it's spices, nuts, and take it a step further. See if we can work with community partners like CTI, where you have maybe people that, fishermen that come down from Hampton for the weekend and sell their catch. Or you have butchers, cheesemakers, fresh eggs, honey, whatever it may be. And even a step further, maybe CTI as a partner accepts not benefits under the whole roof, indoor/outdoor. So now people have access to this quality produce and quality ingredients, as well as centralized cooking classroom. as centralized cooking class potential, educational components showing the value and importance of balanced nutrition. So, I think this kind of project has a large-scale impact, working, and I think we look at it from a regional approach and see, is there buy-in from surrounding communities to work with us? Again, this might be another public-private venture, because it is larger than the city, I think, is capable of taking on right now, but we can't even begin seeing if it's something we can do without starting the conversation. Thank you.
Counsel Yem.
In addition to what Counselors Robinson talked about, I also see this an opportunity is a business for small farmers. We have a lot of families who grow vegetable out in the city of Lowell and the neighboring cities and town. So, this is provide them opportunity to continue the business, not just the summertime, but year-round, and that's what we saw at the market in Montreal. And we had a lot of, we have a lot of opportunity to learn that, and we always think that, why can't we, will we bring it back to the city of Lowell? You know, I'm looking out this, the window through my left, and I see the park here, and the park next to it, all the school. This could be like in Burlington, Vermont, the main street, they close it off, and then all the shops and opportunities. So, it could be, but that's, that's an idea, so I hope that we can come up with an idea of having year-round indoor market. Thank you.
Counsel Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it was a great idea. Love to see it. This is something that I thought would have been a great fit with the first floor of the Hamilton Canal Garage before we built it, and tried to make some noise, had some community meetings and stuff, and unfortunately, it didn't happen. So, hoping we can find another place for it, and I'd love to see this. Thank you.
Counsel Gishir's all set. Counsel Leahy.
Thank you. No, this is a great idea, and, you know, during the summer, we have the farmer's market over at the park on Shattuck Street. But other communities, when I was just out in California, and you, council said they saw this in Montreal, but this could be a weekly event instead of a Friday afternoon. Could do it on a Sunday, and, you know, you just close down a whole section of a couple of streets. It could be Arcane Drive, it could be right across the street here at the Parkway. But once it catches on, it's a great attraction. People love it, they come from all over. You have different items besides the vegetables, you have cooking. So, we really should take a look at this, and this could be, you know, at least an event we could run from May to October, or whatever. But once this catches on, we have plenty of farmers around here, plenty of people that would want to participate. And, you know, the ones I've been to, they run them from nine to one, then they clean up. But they close down multiple streets, and it's a big attraction. So, we really should take a good, hard look at this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. All the comments, actual comments that were made already, I have no further comment to add to this. All in favor, say aye, opposed, say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. And the last motion on the agenda of the meeting, which has taken over two-day interval to complete the agenda, it's been a great experience, but the last motion is 11.23. A motion by myself requests the city manager have proper department review and update snow ban policy for 2024, seconded by Counsel Leahy. And if there's no objection, I would like to say a couple words from here. This is a definite, a definite approach a little bit, counselors. This is the request from small businesses in the area, and specific to when you have a snow ban on the night before, and when the snow begins to fall the next day, it affects a lot of the small business for that evening, especially if the snow ban was to be on a Thursday, or a Friday, or even Saturday, and there's no really expected snowfall until the following morning, a lot of people can't go out, that again affects a lot of small businesses. So, I would like to request a motion to refer this to the public, the safety subcommittee by Counsel Robinson, seconded by Counsel Janess, and also would ask the city managers and DPD to please invite the small businesses where snow ban could affect their business to come participate in the public subcommittee meeting. On favor, say aye, opposed, say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. I just want to let everyone know that there is a Greek independence flag raising going on right now. The Greek community is having a parade from Holy Trinity Church all over the city hall. I invite all the council and all the members watching, it's not too late to come to city hall to participate in this Independence Day flag raising for our Greek community and friends. Need a motion? Any other announcement? Mr. Manager?
Just a quick announcement. Thank you very much to the city councilors who have contacted the office over the last year here. We do have a success. I want to say thank you very much to the Lowell Housing Authority and Ta Chan, the Lowell Police Department. We will be opening, as many of you know, we've talked about this on 145 Gorham Street, the police precinct will be opening soon, that's right across from J's. But this has been a great cooperation between, once again, the new executive director Ta Chan, the Lowell Police Department, and of course, many of the councilors have been pushing for this to happen. But with Sergeant Rivera and Officer Mercado, Dennis Mercy, we've had a lot of partners over there, and especially the Housing Authority, we will be trying to assist them with some parking. They are looking for some assistance. I believe it's two to three parking spots over there, and we're waiting on some final signage. So, we're looking in the coming weeks to have that open in a ribbon cutting, but it's going to be a great success open in that area. The offices are ready. I believe there's over 400 residents, and really to help that neighborhood out. So, congratulations once again to the council, the LPD, and a special thanks to Lowell Housing Authority and the executive director, Ta Chan. Thank you.
No other announcement. Need a motion adjourned by Counsel Rook, seconded by Counsel Gishir. Meetings adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for watching. Have a good weekend.